And gentlemen, we are ready to begin the board workshop of September 27th. This meeting is called to order. The purpose of this workshop is to go over the superintendent's evaluation, the new tool that we have developed, and as well as, once we do that, as far as to check it over for consistency, you know, evaluation as far as if that's the tool we want to use, then also to establish goals before we're going, have a discussion around that, and that'll be it. So, starting out with the superintendent's evaluation, if everybody has on, either brought it or has on their screen, you can actually click on the, on the measurement, on the individual scores. I'm going to open it up to the floor right now, but just by saying, I, I think that we're required by contract, and Mr. Martin can correct me if I'm wrong, but we haven't, we have a requirement to do two evaluations, one's an informal and one's a formal, I believe is our, is the process. And this tool, at least in my mind, and again, I opened up the board for comments and direction, but is what we're using to be the formal tool, to actually decide what we want to do. And, and for me, myself, I thought that it was, it's similar in format to what the teachers use, I think it's, you know, it does, the functions as the purpose intended, and so I, I kind of liked the way it was, and by the, by the grades, it looked like we were, seemed to be all on the same page. So that said, I'm going to start out with, well, Ms. Morgan, you actually did some, some work, so can you want to start with you and actually say the part that you had provided?
All I did was go through all the evaluations and pull out comments that individuals had made that seemed to me like they were forward-thinking, what should we be thinking about going forward with Dr. Atkins, and I just summarized them, that's all.
Well, then, then I'll start down there. Ms. Fisher, as far as the, the tool itself, likes, dislikes, comments, room for improvement?
Yeah, yes, I, I liked the tool, and the category weighting. What I thought was, in using the tool, when you put your comments in each section, then they all went up to the top, so I think there's some little tweaking that could be done with it. You know, the, technically, the way, the way it's used, because it's, it becomes a cumbersome document and there's repetition, you know what I mean? So if you put in some comments for support for teaching and learning, they all go to the top, so I had all this words, I mean, over and over again, so, yeah, yes.
Ms. Larry here.
What I did is I wrote mine out, and I gave it, when I gave it to Ms. Johnson, she knew, she was able to, and I don't know what the trick was, but it would probably is a good idea if we want to do our own typing in, to kind of play with it and figure out what the problem, what the problems are. That was just.
Okay, okay.
We need an operator's manual.
It's kind of, it's kind of like what, when we do our, any computer, anytime you're introduced to a new thing, you get used to it and figure out what the kinks are.
Okay, yes.
Yes, but I, I remember you saying that, Ms. Fisher.
And, and, and I was happy to see that we were kind of all on the same wavelength, and rated Dr. Atkins' success consistently as a board. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Dozier?
And we are strictly talking now about the, are we doing the whole thing, or just one particular part?
The whole, the, the, the overall, the, as the valuation is, do we like it as a tool?
The tool. Okay, all right, I like it as a tool, because I think we used to have like seven areas, and I really like the fact that now there's only four. I was a little concerned about the scoring, and what I did was, I scored, because I knew when we scored, if we just used fours, threes, twos, ones, you're still going to come out with an, with a percentage if you don't have straight across the board. So I scored originally, and I had a conversation with Dr. Atkins about this, you know, highly effective being a four, effective being, there's, you know, you can always improve. Highly effective basically means there's, you know, you just don't, you know, you're the absolute best, don't improve. So what I did was, I scored the whole thing with percentage points, even though it didn't go on as percentage points, but instead it went on as just numbers. So, Dr. Atkins would have gotten a much higher score from me besides a three, but as it was, because we could only use just the one numbers, his number came out at a three. I still like giving percentage points with like 3.5, 3.75, or whatever. That's the one area that, that I, that I would like to, for us to talk about and consider making an adjustment.
Need to change the scale.
No, not really.
Well, because highly effective is 3.25 to a four.
Well.
So there could be room for improvement, but not necessarily, I mean, it's.
Well, that's, and, and that's what threw me off, as far as why this was like this, because I said, okay, if we're not supposed to give percentage, then why do we have this percentage here for us to use? And then it was explained to me that this is for the purpose at the end result, when everything's being compiled, not when we're actually doing scoring.
Exactly.
So I said, okay, I still like having the percentage points, so.
Okay, Ms. Morgan?
I like it. It worked well for me. The thought that I had as I was doing it was, it really does mirror the teacher evaluation in the sense that this is a proficiency measure, not a learning gains measure. And, so I was very careful when I wrote my evaluation to stress that while I had seen significant improvement, for all intents and purposes, the district is approaching where it should be operating, as opposed to being rated highly proficient because of all the extraordinary things that are going on. Those are my comments.
Good point. Ms. Larry here.
I'm glad that we did, we chose to give a higher weighting to the leadership and management. And there was one other, one component that I thought, and I thought, I thought about it when we were putting it together, and then again, as I was doing the evaluation, under, in section C for support for teaching and learning, there was not a component here that had to do with professional development for, or curriculum and instruction. And so that was a component that I thought might be, you know, we might need to revisit that part, because I thought that was, that's, that's, that's an important part, to be sure that we're able to provide that. So that was the, that was the only, that was my only thing that I, that I came out with, oh, we need to make sure, because if we are going to inspire the students to think and learn, then what, there needs to be a part that we're looking at how we're doing those things, not that we're not, but it's an important part to include.
Okay, and I'll just weigh in on the, everybody's had positives except for the one point from Ms. Dozier, and just with the, the category weighting and the, the way that the scale adjusts for the percentage points, I don't know if we're getting compounded complexities by allowing us to use a sliding scale in the input that you get, and then you have, you know, variable, you know, times a weighting, times another, you know, to, on a scale that's, that's, that's moving. I don't know if it's, if it becomes lost in the, in the calculations, that if, I, I think if we just focus on, because then, my big fear is, then if people start focusing on, well, what's a 3.2 versus a 3.5, and what's a 3.7, and, and I think that if we're just a lot more, you know, effective, highly effective, and then let the weight and the, and the mathematics of the five of us, how the component, how the formula works, how they put it, put the formula together, actually gives us the, the, a consistent grading policy across the board. And that's kind of where I'm at, and I think that time will tell, because this is only our first one, but as we see the next one, if we start seeing that what we mean to say is what reflective in the score, which I think everybody, my feeling is right now, that this group is saying, what he got is what I think he should have got, everybody, and that's kind of new for this board, you know, even this board, you know, that I think is going to get more complex when we get seven, that may be a whole lot of different, coming from different places than where we are, but I, I think that this tool needs to be, you know, continue to be validated, but as of right now, I really, I, I like what I see, so that's my, my point. Ms. Dozier?
Well, I guess I have a question as well. We are still dropping, Mr. Martin, the highest and the lowest scores, is that correct, when we, isn't that in policy?
I believe it is.
I think it is.
Take a look at the policy, just to be sure.
Oh, I'm not on the policy.
And if you, and if you actually go to the, the fifth page, you'll actually see the, the composite rating worksheet, and you'll see that the raw score, the highest gets dropped, the lowest gets dropped.
And that is the policy, after removing the highest and lowest ratings in each category.
Just to, just to interject, I really do believe the best thing about this is it looks like we were all thinking along the same lines. You know, we were, we were able to focus on what it is we were looking at, we were looking at, thank you, Dr. Atkins, for the documentation you provided, that was excellent resource and tool for us to look at besides items and things that we collected in our notes along the way.
No.
Okay. Anybody else? Anybody have any else on the tool before we go to our goals? Yes, Ms. Dozier?
I will just say that in the spirit of compromise, if everybody likes that scoring and you don't want to change it, I can certainly learn to adjust and adapt.
Ms. Dozier? Ms. Morgan, did you?
Good.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Mr. Dr. Atkins, would you like to weigh in as well?
Documents.
Okay.
There you go. Would you find yours?
Well, I think overall, you know, it's, you know, it was a nice test run, I, I certainly appreciate the fact that, you know, the board took the time to make comments, I mean, that was one of the most important things, I think, for me as a superintendent, to, to receive that level of feedback, not just about a score, but also some specific information. I, I understand where Ms. Dozier's coming from, but I will, I will also say that I appreciate her comments, because that has helped, helped you kind of put your, where your thinking was, so it wasn't like a straight three, so it helped, helped me with, with the scores. I mean, I can see the, I can see the complications, you know, but I also, you know, I certainly honor her point. But I think, I think at this point, I'm, you know, happy with the way it turned out.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Ms. Dozier?
Yes, and in the future, and, you know, I, I'm so glad that I kept my original worksheet where I had scored you, like, for instance, on leadership and management, I gave you a 3.5. In the future, because I've been doing this for so long, I will simply bump that up to a four, you know, and, you know, in the future, as I do this, I'm going to keep in mind that we're only using four, three, two, one, and not, and as I said, there was a little confusion, so I apologize for any confusion that I created.
Very good. Moving on to a little bit more of the, of the meat of the matter, then, is if you click on as far as the goals, I, I don't know if any of you other had discussions with Dr. Atkins as far as goal alignment, but, you know, Dr. Atkins.
Point of order, could we stop? She can't get on her computer to get to any of the documents.
Absolutely. Tech, please.
Tech support.
Tech support. I want tech support.
Yeah, I can touch the screen, that works.
That's not the one you go into. It's this one.
Oh, never mind, never mind.
Oh, think we got it, but still double check.
Wait just a second, we're still, you know, we're novices at technology.
Just go ahead and log in.
No laughing allowed.
No, let it in.
Okay, got it.
You got it?
Got it, thank you, folks.
It's where it's a team effort.
All right.
All right.
And again, a shout out to our IT team. Okay, so, Dr. Atkins made the comment that, you know, his goals and vision is enunciated and outlined in, in the Vision 2020 Plan, and the, the discussion that we had was, you know, we can call it, give it the acronym of the Vision 2020, but in our terminology for the board, it's really the superintendent's goals and objectives. So we can call it superintendent's goal and objectives, you know, under, in subtitle called, quote, Vision 2020, because then next year, he can call it whatever he wants, but it's our goals and objectives that we approve in his Vision 2020's plan. The only discussion I'd like to have, board, is that this is Dr. Atkins' Vision 2020, it's not our goals and objectives for the superintendent, so that's my only rub, is that, you know, we set his, are supposed to set his goals and direction in conjunction with him, not kind of, you know, as far as publishing it. I don't think that that's a big stretch for Dr. Atkins, because I, I think that he's, you know, he said, this is my goal and visions, of course, it's always subject to the board, so I, I don't see that as being problematic, but just in the, in the procedural aspect of, you know, do, if we agree with that, that we want to, I guess the first thing is, do we agree that, you know, we don't really need to have two sheets of music, that if we, that when, when we give our goals and objectives, you know, Dr. Atkins is, you know, that's what his mantra is, that he's preaching to the, to the, to his, his band, and, and then we just have to, then the next step is, if we all agree with that, the next step is, how do we proceduralize that so that we are part of that, that process, that when he brings us something and we get our feedback, and then he finally says, okay, this is my, my plan going forward. Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, that's why I put together this, I, I pulled out from the evaluations, comments that people made about things that were in process, or things that needed to be addressed, because I thought, and, and then grouped them the way they were in the evaluation, because I thought that way we could go through 2020 and say, okay, are the, are the concerns that were raised by board members in information and communications being addressed in his Vision 2020, his goals for 16, 17? Same thing with teaching and learning, strategic planning and quality development. If they're not, then we have to think about how we want to do this, but it may well be that these concerns that we brought up in, in our evaluations are already being addressed in his Vision 2020, and to be very honest, I didn't do that work. I didn't line up the two.
You didn't have to.
No, and I think it might be best, and I appreciate, Ms. Morgan, that what you did is that now we can actually see, go to the person who wrote it and say, and then we all together can help, help whoever, like Ms. Fisher, for an example, the first one working on changes in personnel management, let's now all of us look in the, in the 2020 Plan, and maybe Dr. Atkins can help us to say, where is that in the plan? So let's do that first. So working on support changes in personnel management. Ms. Fisher, can you elaborate on that just a little bit, why Dr. Atkins is looking through his plan to, to say where that is?
Yes.
Hold on one second.
That would be in the.
Is under information and communication.
Yes.
Well, that's how, that's how we have it, but I think it would align more with focus area four, I think, isn't that where you are with a?
Well, what, what I did was, I looked at the goals and indicators, and, I'm just going to try to find out which one that was. Well, under information and communication, with the goals and indicators, then I looked at, you know, establishes processes and methods to respond to customer requirements, establishes processes to measure customer needs and levels of satisfaction, and establishes positive staff morale through flexibility, support and recognition of groups and individuals working toward district improvement. So then I put in there, you know, continued, continuous use of strategic plan strategies and administrative activities and initiatives, so I see that he aligns his initiatives with the district's strategic plan, one of the focus areas. And, and I don't have my handwritten notes with me, but I know that one of the things that is happening is that there's a lot of work going on with personnel management in the, in the focus area for hiring and retaining the, the best talent, and that, that the people, he has the people in human resources working on different strategies, and I'll, I'll just, I had actually texted Dr. Pruitt, because I had a comment at the CSI meeting last night from a teacher, saying, you know, HR really has it together, because she was looking for a part-time job because of a family situation, and someone from HR contacted her and said, this is available, you might be interested in this. So there's like a lot of work, I think, going on, based on the superintendent's goals, to fit people into the right seats, and to help them get into positions where they will be satisfied and happy and less likely to bail out, you know, because I, I think that retention is a really big issue for, for this district and, and many others. But, so I guess that was why that comment, he is working on different changes in the way we are managing our, our personnel recruitment and, and retention. Does that make sense, or am I too global?
No, that's fine, I mean, I, I read it and read that.
It's an ongoing.
It's a work, yes, so, and then the question was, is there anything specific that's a priority on this work in process that needs to be tackled? on this work in process that needs to be tackled?
Well, I, because we're having the problem with, I had made a comment to Dr. Atkins the other day that it, when I was looking at the agenda for tonight's meeting and looking at the personnel changes, I said, "I noticed that there were X number of people, you know, who left, um, in that short period of time". So I wonder, you know, first of all, I always wonder about when it says personal, have we ever gotten to that point where we know what the problem is? And is it the requirements, like, like you addressed before, some of the stringent requirements, and, and teachers are overwhelmed, we know? Or is it something personal? Or is it a personality problem? And, you know, I've heard some people say, "Well, I'm not going to work there anymore because I, I, I don't feel like I'm treated with respect and, and appreciation". So, I mean, I think that is a work in progress, and although the superintendent has that, a handle on that, getting the message all the way down through the organization sometimes takes more time. So that was why I indicated that that was a work in progress.
That makes sense.
Okay.
And I don't know if these are aligned, but, you know, a couple of the goals you do have in focus area four, we have a goal around, um, reducing, you know, instructional turnover. We do have a goal around retention of administrative staff. We also have some goals around, um, customer service. You know, the percentage of internal customers segmented by group who rate customer service they've received from district personnel as excellent, um, you know, is, is a goal in our district customer service survey. So, I mean, there are, there are, there's a wellness goal around wellness participation. So all these are, there's a number of them that are slated at trying to produce a better working environment for our employees, so you improve retention and, and reduce turnover.
Right. Okay, thank you. And Ms. Morgan, on the data and layman language, can you explain the?
Yeah, I, I, and I think I refer to this in other sections as well. We need to be able to show people in very simple terms what it is that we've accomplished and what our goals are, and it can be as simple as a dash, a picture of a dashboard or whatever. But we can stand and explain, and people, I mean, people get to this, understanding what we're doing in different ways, and I think what we're missing is the data piece, you know, a way to explain the data. And we, we have to stop using ed terms. We need to use, we need to think about who our audience is, and we need to speak to them in their terms. So that's what that comment is.
Well, if I could add to that, one of the things that, that I said, and, and it's funny, last week, when I was at that, at that event for the School Boards Association, one of the things that kept resonating is, you know, "When you are out there with the public, don't use that edge of speak, because nobody understands it but us". And I used to be a champion here at the board table and say, "Guys, we've got to quit using these, these", you know, when you talk about C-SPAC and TALK and, and SPALK and, and ESE and...
STARS.
STARS. Nobody knows what that means. We have to take a little bit longer, and we have to say that, because, believe it or not, the public, that really aggravates them. And, you know, another thing that came out is, the business community really, really wants to come, and they want to be a part, but they want to have the respect that they deserve. And the, and, and I was kind of thinking, "Okay, somebody explain exactly", I thought, you know, I mean, I know I'm always very respectful, but the level of respect that they have achieved in the business community, we have got to show that level of respect, and I know this is kind of off topic and I apologize. But, um, we have to demonstrate to them how important we think they are. And how do we do that? By, when we form a committee, you know, we don't have an internal person in charge of the committee if it's the, you know, if it's the Business Alliance for Advisory to the Superintendent. Instead, it would not be one of us, or it wouldn't be staff member, but instead, it would be a business person. And little things like that kept coming out that, and, and I, and right now, I'm not going to talk about it, but maybe we're going to eventually have a, a couple of days where we're going to talk about stuff, and, and there are some things that, that, that we can change a little bit differently, not only us, but staff as well, that will change the culture and change the environment that we have here. And Dr. Atkins and I have actually talked about those.
Yeah, and one example is, we were at a meeting, and there were business people from the community there, and the one man raised his hand and said, "This doesn't mean anything to me. Tell it to me in plain English, what, what exactly does that mean?". I think it had something to do with our legislative priorities. So, yeah, and, and I thought...
And they really do want to help.
Wow, yeah, I mean, because they want to know what it is, but we're not verbalizing it in a way that they can understand, so, yeah, okay.
Just, just a couple of quick comments about, about some of the things you're mentioning. One, we do have a, we do have a goal that is focused on dashboards and the percentage of schools and departments leveraged.
Where is that? I couldn't...
It's, uh, it's under focus area six, target one. You've got indicators, and then you have, um, you've got, well, we're doing a baseline this year and increasing by 10% every year, the percentage of schools and departments leveraged dashboard scorecard system will increase to a maximum 10% annually and will maintain at or above 95% as measured by the district data survey. And what to, in order to accomplish that, I haven't shown you, I should, did have Brian Kearls create a project tracker, which I use to track projects on a regular basis, so all of our project leaders, which are division chairs, like, you know, Amy's got several, Angela Pruitt has several, Bill Law has several, and so I can pull up this dashboard and look at it. But I did ask Mark to set a meeting, and I think, Mark, let me know, if you get this week, is that when you have the meeting with Brian set up? What I'd like to do is have Brian work on a dashboard for Vision 2020 that is something that you can pull up and look at, um, so it, it allows you to track practice or progress toward those goals. I also met with Lauren, we're talking about producing a user-friendly, parent-friendly, community-friendly version of Vision 2020 that, you know, uses, you know, really, hopefully tells our story well, you know, using students and teachers and so forth, and doing it in a, in a manner that, you know, eliminates the jargon, because the audience is not us, it's the public, and, you know, business and parents and students and so forth. So she's working on that project with me, has her staff. They're already, they're out there, you know, we've given her some students and teachers to talk to, to try to align with the focus areas of, of this plan. The final thing is that in just what Mrs. Dozier's mentioned, and some of the rest of you have talked about with meeting with business leaders, um, what we, when we did our last executive roundtable, we let the business folks lead the tables. So they were the, uh, they were the spokesperson. They were, uh, like, you know, Mike Welch did one, and I know Will Scott did another one, and, and, uh, I think Mark did, did you do yours, Mark? I can't remember. Yeah, Mark, he always ends up doing it. But, um, we tried to, um, you know, and same with our district strategic plan, we had another meeting where we invited them in, and I got up there and shut up after probably five or 10 minutes, and then the rest of the time was, you know, the John Cisels of the world, um, taught, speaking to the plan and giving their input and comments around, which each focus area leader got up there and briefly described it, and then they went to work on giving us feedback around the district's strategic plan. So we're going to try to do the, less talking to them and more getting their input.
Bravo.
And I had one other meeting at Fine Mark Bank last Friday, same thing about those folks are giving us advice. Amy, um, Dr. Carlin, Kelly Letcher were out there, and we're getting it, you know, we're just getting their input on our budget and our capital plan. They had a lot of great, a lot of great ideas, so.
Great.
Good.
Okay, so that's the, that's the one I was looking for, for you, Ms. Morgan, 6.1 for the dashboard to coordinate with that.
Yeah, good.
And then, then, then the last one on the information, the, the rollout of the standards. Dr. Atkins, do we, do you have a metric for that? I don't believe you have a metric, it's more of a timeline, right?
Yeah, I do not have a metric for that, um, and maybe that's something that we need to put into our plan. We do have a plan that Soretta Ralph has, it's one of her, it's part of her project plan. So we have a, we are tracking that. She has completed, um, right now, we're in the ELA, ELA revision stage, and so the folks are, are beating up on that, and we are getting ready to go into the math portion and start working on the math standards. So she's also simultaneously working on getting that set up as well. But we'll, we'll put something in here about the progress of that project.
Yeah, I, I would like to, and, and we mentioned that at the DAC Executive Committee meeting yesterday as far as when we're going to do a first out to the, to the parents and so on, probably in February. But we would like, I think, as the board, if I can get consensus, we would like to have, if you could send us a copy of the project, so we see the overall timeline, and then also add some type of milestone metrics for, in the Vision 2020 for us to monitor as well, because that is pivotal, we believe, for the direction of our district. And it's something that we all, you know, you, you pitched it and we all swung, and so now you, you've got us, but now we want to see the, to be measured by it. So, everybody all right with that?
I think it sounds great.
Okay, all right. Yeah, baseball metaphor, I'm following the Boston, so. Well, I'm sorry, Ms. Dozier, do you have something, or? All right, let's go down to teaching and learning. The 4.1, management of personnel issues is, Ms. Fisher, that's kind of similar to what we, in a different spot, but the same thing, right? 4.1 in the vision plan as far as the management of personnel.
Yes.
Dr. Pruitt's area. Uh, the next one down to communication, training, and feedback of staff are being evaluated, implemented gradually, gradually. I think that's, you're referring to focus area seven, if we turn there, I think. The feedback from our staff, I think that's 7.1. Nope, I'm wrong. It's...
It's not your seven.
It's, uh, sick, it's, uh, five, it's area five, 5.1. And it's process improvement and professional development. Is that, Ms. Fisher, where you were?
Yes. That's where I was going.
Same page, any board members, any comments? Then the next two is actually, I believe, when we talk about engagement of parents, that's focus area two. Community, engage families in leveraging community partnerships, we just spoke about that. Next two are actually, actually, next three.
Yeah, the same that I've already talked about, but...
2.1.
Yeah, but that one about engaging parents in the standards of excellence, I mean, that is a proactive, I think, one of the reasons we get so much pushback on things like what people call crazy math or upside-down math or whatever, is because we have not shown parents what it is that we are doing with children, so they understand and appreciate the, the difference in the instruction that their children are getting, which is, they all like, they know rote, but they don't understand the in-context learning. And as long as we're not showing it to them, they are going to push back and say to Johnny, "You're right, all you need to do is memorize this, this is stupid, I don't know why you're learning to do this". And we have to stop that, and I think that happens at the school level, um, with parents being engaged by, by faculty.
Right, and, and I think sometimes, I'm sorry, we, um, we have some schools who are providing math nights and, and, okay, but, you know, the turnout there usually is the parents of the kids who are already getting it anyway, because that's the way they, um, that's where their focus is in their home. And so, and it's not consistent across the district. So, and, and honestly, I'll tell you, after all the years I've been in education, the hardest thing is engaging those parents, um, the majority of the parents, you know, whose children, you know, need that help and who are having difficulty supporting their kids academically at home because they themselves may not have that level of understanding or education, and that, that's the big challenge.
Ms. LaRiviere, then, Ms. Morgan?
And I, I think, going back to what Ms. Morgan was mentioning, I really do believe, much like we had parents involved and with the strategic plan initially, I really do believe that it's important as we're doing, whereas we're creating the standards, to have opportunities for parent input and explanation and clarification, as may be. That, I think that, that would be beneficial.
Agreed, Ms. Morgan?
You know, I'm thinking, as I'm listening to Ms. Fisher, could we do a Khan Academy for parents that would explain what it is that we're doing? So they don't have to come into the classroom, but it, but they can do what their kids are doing, which is going online.
Dr. Atkins?
Yeah, I think we could do that. I mean, one of, one of the things that, as we, um, roll out some of the Vision 2020 initiatives, you know, initially, Lauren and I talked about a, you know, one video overview, and then specific segments that are a little bit more drilled into each focus area. So, um, part of that one could be, you know, focus area one for parents, could be some of the things that you all are talking about right now. I mean, I do, I do want to try to make that point, that, you know, one of the things I think we can do a better job educating is in the area around formative assessment. And this is something that we've talked to Florida Gulf Coast University about helping us actually with educating our teachers, but in addition to that, we could do that same thing for our parents. One of the things that makes, like Susan Caputo so successful, is she gets that. And what our school development team will tell you is that not everybody does, and so we need to do more professional development in that area for our instructional staff and administrators, but also for our parents, you know? So, um, you know, a lot of the parents even that show up here don't quite understand the use of formative assessment, so.
And I think it goes back to Ms. LaRiviere's statement about relationships, that, you know, when you build a relationship with the parents, then they actually have, they want to listen to what you have to say, and then it's the, then it's the, the Caputos of the world that say, "Okay, this is what's coming down, and this is why", and they build that rapport, and I think it's not just a, you know, one time, you know, one video. I mean, I think that's great information for people, but as a teaser, but we really need to get those parents engaged, you know, in a, in a meaningful manner.
To the school level, yeah.
So I, I would like to actually have, when you talk about putting in the Vision 2020, not only the implementation plan, but also maybe a second target as far as the, the, the connection to the, to the parents and to the, to the community on how we're going to get them, um, you know, to, to the, to the, to the, not only, you know, bring them to the bucket, but have them drink from the wa, you know, drink the water, because, you know, we, we send out a whole lot of stuff, but, you know, if they just, they just look at the bucket and walk on by, they don't drink it, you know? And, I mean, it's just, then sometimes, then they, then you get hit, you know, three weeks later, it's like, "Well, wait a minute, we just gave you that stuff", you know, but they're just not engaging, you know? And so I, I really think that's, and that's a challenge, and I think the board would like to, you know, put that as a metric, because it's, it's, you know, we don't have the answer yet, and I think that you could write a book like that across America, you'd be very, very wealthy. It's a, it's a tough challenge, but I think we need to, to make that really very, very, uh, front, front on our, on our radar. Okay, moving now to fully developed standards, I think that one we don't need to...
I was just saying that, I was looking forward to seeing them.
Yeah, yeah, so that was just covered. So we're, we're all on the same page in these things, so that's good. We say it a little bit different way, but we're all saying the same thing, so that's good. Teachers need to have knowledge and expertise to unpack the standards, to determine what students have mastered or lacking to accomplish the standard requirements. The skill and knowledge base needs to be supported and strengthened within the district, so maximum learning may occur for students. And I think you're just memorializing and, and summarizing what Dr. Atkins just said as far as the formative assessments, to be able to explain that in a better way, and to, so people understand why we're doing what we're doing in that manner. Is that, or you want to expand on it, please? Because you're, you've got the educational...
Years ago, when we first had the Florida Sunshine State Standards, when they first came out, there was a, they were all standards, but there were no benchmarks that talked about the different criteria that needed to be worked with along the way. And, um, so one of the things that's beneficial for teachers, I believe, is to be able to, okay... okay, this is the standards, so what do my students need to be able to do so they can accomplish that scan, standard? Then they know what holes to fill in. Now, granted, thank goodness, we have the STAR assessment, that's going to help out a lot with knowing what they are, but also having the, helping teachers develop that skill. And that many times happens naturally in PLC meetings and, and other occasions where teachers are, are collaborating, collaborating and working together. I guess, for a teacher to feel free to give a student a task at a lower Lexile level, reading level, to see if they can actually do what the standard says. And then you know, there are a lot of students that can do that standard at a lower level, and then you know what you need to work on. You're not working on teaching the standard, you've got to help to develop those reading skills.
Very good point. Okay, strategic plan and quality improvement. Ms. Dozier, continued updates on the DSP are needed.
Well, that was a comment that I made, it wasn't, I just make comments...
Okay.
...on everything, whether it's a one, a four, or whatever. I make comments in all areas. And I commented that I like that we have continued updates. But part of what I put on there did not get captured, that I would have liked to have had captured, and that was, that it would be helpful for us to have some updates on quality, because we're still in the quality initiative with processes and, you know, continuous improvement and all of those. And we have not had any type of, of update on where we are with that, trainings, what principles are going, I mean, I know that we've, we've had a couple, you know, a couple of schools that have been tapped as quality schools, you know? And so I put that on there, that I would, especially as we transition to a seven-member board, there may be people that may not be familiar with quality, and it would be important to, to, you know, kind of get like a, just a, a boot camp on it.
Well, I think that's good, and I, and I know, you know, Dr. Pruitt's group is really, you know, embracing the quality with the Six, with the Six Sigma in their, in their, in their department, and they're doing the Sterling Challenge, but as a organization, I think is where Ms. Dozier's looking at, is organizationally, how are we, how are we embodying that, that, that qua, the quality mindset initiative and, and the Six Sigma methodology and, and across, across all aspects? And, and how do, and how are we measuring that in the Vision 2020? There's really not, we don't really have a focus area specifically, because it's supposed to be permeated through it, but we, there's really no, I don't think there's any, any indicators that are showing, are we, just like what Ms. Dozier said, are we do, are we getting any better? Are we, you know, where are some indices that would show that, that the qua, that quality is actually prevalent through our processes? And I don't know if that would be through, just maybe instead of having a particular, having an indicator of quality in of itself, but to have a quality variable or a quality index in each of the things. For example, if they're talking about professional development, one of the criteria is, you know, how many people are being trained in quality? When we talk about, you know, the, the hiring mechanisms, you know, incorporate some of the, what the quality initiative that Dr. Pruitt is doing in the hiring and retaining, using the Six Sigma process of that, within that process. And just, you know, presenting out in each of those areas, you know, that, with a focus on that quality indices. Ms. Morgan, then Ms. Fisher. I mean, Ms. Dozier, then Ms. Fisher.
Okay, and another thing that, that I thought of, but I didn't write down here, as I was writing this, for instance, all of our schools used to do data folders. Every student in the school district did a data folder. You could walk into a school and you could see a second grader and the second grader, tell me where you are. They'd go over to their little cubby, and they'd get out their data folder, and they'd start explaining to you, well, what does this mean? And they could tell you exactly where they were, where they were when they started, where they are now, how they've achieved, well, how did you do that? Because I'm keeping up with what I do, and this is my goal, and, and, you know, we were really teaching, you know, those quality principles, and, and that's, you know, that was one thing that I thought of. And then another thing, we have a quality committee by policy, and the quality committee used to come occasionally, and they would, you know, say, tell us what was going on, you know, with the board and so forth. And I know, we haven't had anybody from the quality committee come before the board in quite a while, so.
Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, and I was, and talking about that, the quality, I know that I go when I can to the Quality Improvement Advisory Committee, and I know Mrs. Morgan goes more frequently. And didn't you, in your comments, just say that they were talking about becoming more of a working committee?
Mm-hmm.
Because when you look at some of the schools that have been tapped and showcased and have done the school visits and everything, you see that it's happening in those places. But then again, we're missing that consistency, organization, and district-wide. You know, we've got spots here and there where people adopt the philosophy and they work it, and, like at Mariner High School, you know, you can tell that it's happening there. But how do we ensure that it permeates our district? Because we've had quality here for a long time, way before I got on the board. Yet, with all of our mobility rate, our tra, you know, turnover, a lot of people have no clue what it is, you know, especially down in the trenches, the leadership does, but then it doesn't always get to all the stakeholders.
Ms. Dozier, then I'll go to Dr. Atkins.
And I will. We embraced the quality initiative back in 2001. And I, I will tell you that I was a resister, and, and I said, prove to me that this is not going to be another flavor of the month. Because we had, and I can sit here and I can name the different initiatives that we were picking up in this, and every single year, we had something different in this district. Well, quality has, and, you know, and they said it's sustainable, you know, that this is something that's been here, that it's a culture, and, you know, and of course, after we had workshops on it, I went, oh, yeah, well, we definitely need to do this. And so it has stayed around. There's still many departments that are using the, you know, the processes that they have in place, so that, that everything, you know, and part of the, the idea of quality is, if all of us dropped off tomorrow, that this organization would be able to continue, because the sustainability-focused areas that we have put in place through process documents, so that somebody could just pick up all the documents and say, oh, this is how you do it, you know? And not that I want everybody to drop off tomorrow, but I mean, I'm using that as just an example, so.
Dr. Atkins?
Just, just a number of things to comment on, as it relates to conversation, thank you very much. The, you do have a target four and focus area five that gets to the percentage of schools and departments participating, and continuous systemic improvement LE, CSI LE. So those are site visits, which are, are part of the quality movement. We've got the NEAF grant, that really, they, to, to close the achievement gap, they tended to fo, they focused on quality, and that was a part of CSI LE. So I have been discussing with, a couple of things, with Cindy McClung and Denise Carlin, is figuring out a way to get a, a position or something to, to forward that effort. And I also mentioned it to Marshall Bauer to help possibly with the funding of that. NEAF is willing to put out $50,000, it wasn't in our budget to do that this particular year, but I think we could, I'm looking to try to find maybe an opportunity for somebody else to pony up and help us in that effort. So we also, in terms of goals here, the next one, focus area six, percentage of users who agree or strongly agree that they have data systems and supports to allow them to use data effec, effectively to inform their work will increase a minimum 5% annually. So that's getting at the use of data, it's not quite at the data folder, but that's, that's where that's intended. Dr. Pruitt is taking part, her team, in the Sterling Challenge, so they're working on Six Sigma Black Belt and, and that. Some of us have done barely, Green Belt, barely, okay? It's very, for, for somebody in, in my position, it, it becomes very, you know, you're down in the real weeds there. And, and so, you know, Mark and I have really made the decision to stop at Green Belt and let Dr. Pruitt go on with getting down into the really, you know, the, the meat of all of that stuff. But we certainly are working to support that effort as well. So I think that we do have some things going on. However, my discussions with Cindy revolve around, for, for the first time, what I would like to see is, you know, you have support on the executive team, you have some good things going on in some of our schools. We want to improve the connection between the superintendent exec, the cabinet and CSI LE. That link has not been functional for a while, a long while. So we want to improve that. We want to use the principal lead position to also help us, help us take CSI lead and, or LE, and kind of, you know, reinforce its efforts in a more systemic manner. And I'm not where I want to be with all of that, but that's, that's the planning stages as it relates to the spreading of, of quality in the district. So what I will do is go back with my team and work on a little bit more of a specific goal, a little bit more structured plan for that, but that's, that's where we are today.
And Ms. Dozier, I think that encapsulates what your concern was.
Yes, yes.
Very good.
Only been here.
And then the last two, as far as the, the teaching excellence and the, and instructional reinforced best practices, I think that still goes back to the, what we were doing with the career ladder in four, 4-1, 4-2, I think is there. I think that was more of a comment by Ms. LaRiviere, right, about that?
Well, yeah, we can't, we cannot clone Soretta Ralph. I wish we, I wish we could, to do multiple paces. But those people who have a passion to read those professional books, to go to those conferences, to go get that training, to find, to be, that have that passion to do that. And some people have that passion, and they're in the classroom. And we may be able to use, make use of some of those people who are classroom experts. It doesn't necessarily mean hiring someone to be down here, but look for those people that, that have the passion and the drive, and just do it because they're crazy, like I used to. Not crazy, really, but because you love the kids, yeah.
Anybody else? Okay, so I think what, what I would propose at this point is that we would let Dr. Atkins take the notes. I took the notes as far as the, the alignment with the ones that we had brought out for comments, and I think I will get with Dr. Atkins, and after he has an opportunity to flesh out the ones that we needed to add or tweak, and then we will bring it back to the board in six weeks?
Yeah, one of the things I was talking about doing is, is once we got through this and I received board feedback, was to go and revise Vision 2020 as a plan and, and develop a presentation to the board, and hopefully we'll have the overview video in place at that time. So, you know, next would become a briefing or a workshop, whatever your pleasure. And then we also want to do a, I'm going to talk tomorrow to cabinet about a cabinet retreat on, on the next stage of an implementation, you know, the next steps with implementation of it. We've already done a lot in terms of, of starting implementation of major components, but we want to take the next step.
And I would propose, board, that I will find time to put it, or I will, or the, you know, my predecessor, but to put it when the new board can, you know, so the entire seven can see the Vision 2020 presentation as the launching point of kind of the new board's vision and focus of how the superintendent's moving forward. Okay? Okay, now we will move, with that said, we will now go to comments. Well, we'll do, we don't have us for us, but we'll go to board attorney comments?
I have none, sir.
And Dr. Atkins?
No comments, other than, like I said before, I appreciate the feedback and the amount of time taken by this board to provide me feedback as a superintendent. It's very helpful, and I appreciate it.
And board, I have just one for the good of the order, bringing forward the, Dr. Atkins and I had a very in-depth conversation with FSBA. We were tasked to do the onboarding, to talk about what they had accomplished with, with Pinellas and those type of groups, you know, and, and we had a really good discussion, and I will write a memo as far as some of the word, some of the conversation and notes that Dr. Atkins and I took, as far as some of the, the hurdles and obstacles that other counties have experienced, and some of the good points that Andrea and Tina brought forward with us. But what we had talked about doing is actually having a, a board workshop to be held for, to discuss, to have this onboarding process, and actually have to consider and think about those, the, some of those things that we needed to get done. And they, and they mentioned some very, for the initial agenda, they talked about, let's just do, let's schedule the times so that we actually have, because what they recommended is that we need to have touchpoints, and that every three or four weeks, or, or five weeks out, we just have a touchpoint that the board gets together and says, these are the things that we saw that we're addressing, these are some of the things that are popping up with a new expanded board, and, and some of the things we need to work out. And so that we have those meetings scheduled, and if we end up becoming fluid, you know, sooner, we can always drop the last ones off, but that way they're scheduled. The FSBA, you know, moderator has that on their schedule, because I thought it was important to have somebody down to be able to, to facilitate, and the fact that, you know, we're going to have Tina down the first time, because currently, am I right, that...
Cook?
Yeah, Carol, Carol is actually in the middle of her election right now, so, so she, you know, she may or may not be able to be down for the, you know, for the first one, but, but a subsequent one she can be down to be able to help us, because she actually lived through that, that transition and was part of that at the time, so she has a lot of insight, so.
Actually, I did have a conversation with Carol Cook, and Carol Cook said that there's no one on that board currently that was there when they went to a seven-member board.
Really?
Yeah, so Carol, Carol said, Jeannie, I can't tell you, because I, I said, can you share with me some of the, the hurdles, experiences? And she said, and the oldest, not the oldest member, but the longest seated member on the board is, is Linda Lerner. And she said, I think Linda Lerner actually came on after we had gone to a seven-member board. So they were the most recent, but they still, it's, it's longer ago than any of the current board members were, were sitting on the board, so.
Well, Carol probably is the last person to have that insight, because she was there.
And there were some other boards that transitioned, have transitioned too, correct?
No, Pinellas is the last board.
The last board that did.
Pinellas County is the last board that went from a five to a seven-member board. And, you know, your, your other boards...
That was seven years ago?
No, it's a lot longer than, I mean, it's, she said, Jeannie, I, she says, I think it's been 20 years ago.
I know Polk did that also, I relied on some of their documents when we went through that process, but I believe that was before Pinellas, and Polk was early 90s, I believe it was.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
So it's been 20-plus years, yeah.
It's been a long time since anybody, and, and nobody in FSBA was around when a board went to a...
Well, they, they still, according to, you know, Andrea, and, you know, they, they still have the issues as far as, you know, school visits, you know, graduations, all those type of issues, and, and how they deal with it, and how they deal with the, the mindset of the board, you know, and, and this board, before it moves from five to seven, that, you know, we, that, you know, we are board members. We are no longer, you know, a District Four member, we are a board member. Somebody calls in and doesn't say, oh, it's my district, they say, I'm a board member, you know, and, and how they handled it as, as, as a member of the board, to get rid of that, to eliminate that territorial issues and the, and the issues of, of parochialism. Ms. Fisher?
So then, so then we're going to have to be trailblazers of, of a sort, but explain to me what you meant by that, because if we just became single-member districts, and two at large, we're going to do something that's not territorial, then we're going to serve, as we do now, the entire district?
Yes, I mean, you're, you're elected, you're elected by your, by your district, but as far as servicing the community, we serve the community.
Exactly, yeah. Only for election purposes, then?
Correct, and that's what Pinellas said, that they made that pact way back when, and it's continued on from board to board, that, you know, and if this, this group... and it's continued on from board to board, that, you know, and if this, this group starts that paradigm, she said, if you don't do it from the get-go, you're never going to get, you let that cat out of the box and you're never going to get him back in. So we have to make as an agreement to us that, you know, we, we are now serving the community. Somebody calls and says, well, you're my committee man. It's like, no, I live in your district, but I, I'll be happy to serve you. But, you know, I'm, I serve, you know, all of my constituents. And I think we need to continue to have that focus, Ms. Dozier.
In statute and in the constitution, it defines us as a board member that we represent the children. It doesn't talk about districts, but instead it talks about that we will represent all the children. And this was the way that Andrea and I, when we had a conversation about it, that was the way she kind of explained it, that, you know, that we, we all are representing all of the children in the county.
Yes, the statute says that each member of the district school board shall serve as the representative of the entire district, rather than as the representative of a district school board member residence area.
So, so, so those are the issues. So I, I, what I would propose is to send a letter out to, um, to the, the four candidates that are, five, um, candidates that are, is it five, one, two, three, four? Oh, the four candidates and Ms. Patrica, who's already elected. Um, send them out the letter and invite them to come as well. Um, the dates we had scheduled, we had Thursday or Friday, November tenth or eleventh, um, and either from eight-thirty to one or from twelve to four-thirty was the times. And I didn't know if everybody brought their calendars to see if we could do that.
It's already put on my calendar for, to, to hold it. So I have the tenth, eleventh and the fourteenth on my calendar that Susan had put down for us for possible onboarding.
And the fourteenth, I think, was discussed too, wasn't it, Dr. Atkins?
And I would not be able to attend.
Yeah, but that's the reason we said the week of the fourteenth, because Ms. Dozier already indicated she can't be available. So we were, we were looking and if everybody gets consensus now, so we can get this letter out, if everybody's good with Friday, the eleventh, from twelve to four-thirty?
I will make whatever work.
Yeah, whatever works.
That's, we'll get that out and then, uh, we'll make freshmen's available. We'll let everybody know, we start at twelve o'clock. We won't have, you know, come, come eat, you know, fed, because we're going to go from twelve to four-thirty and, and, and go straight through and just take a break when somebody needs a break. Ms. Dozier.
Well, while we're, while we're on this and before we get to that on, onboarding, I brought the protocol manual with me and there's something that I need to say and I need to take responsibility for. When I was writing these protocols, I kept asking for input. And I have to say, I have to apologize to you, Ms. LaRiviere, because the two of you sit, one, two, three, four, five. So Mr. Mr. Toiber was the vice chair. So I said, he would move up to, you know, I, I wrote it in the protocols. He would move up to the chair, then let one be the vice chair, so, 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 so. Well, you're not district four, you're district five.
Oh, so you should be sitting here.
So I apologize.
We just move our bodies so that you.
Right, but I, because nobody gave me any input, I wrote it thinking that four and five. So I came up with a little scenario that would work and that would be continue to move down here to one, but let you be vice chair, because I know you would probably, I would think you would want to be the, want to have the experience of being able to run meetings before you became chair. I mean, I just made that assumption. Would you or would you just want to?
I, I am willing to do whatever. And I even wonder if we should, and, and some of, and I'm having some thoughts about.
Well, and let me, can I finish my thought?
Yes, you finish.
And my thought would be that then you would move right into six and seven, because you're five. So it would make sense, you know? But this one year, we've got you, we've got you, once you become the chair, it would be five, six, seven, and then back, duh, duh, duh.
And I'll be gone.
So, I mean, and that would make a clear rotation. I mean, I, if everybody understands that. And again, I wanted to publicly say that the fact that you two changed chairs confused me and I apologize about that. And, and I remember the day that we had the conversation, I went, no, I'm doing it in numerical order. And in my head, I was doing it in numerical order.
And that was because poor Ms. Eleanor, she couldn't, nobody could see her, because I blocked the view. That's why we did that.
Well, and we also may want to leave, and it may come up to be readdressed to possibly consider, maybe it should be elections rather than rotate. So I'm not going to, like, let's just have those, let's not have all those conversations now.
Well, I just wanted to put that out there.
I appreciate it, Jeannie, that's very gracious. Um, I have a question. I noticed, I was looking ahead for when the, the, the board meetings are in November. We have the November ninth after the elections and then November the twenty-second. Am I correct in assuming that's going to be when we do the swearing-in?
Well, you know.
That's what it says on the calendar, but we have to cancel that, because it's my birthday.
Well, the only problem is it's set by the con- you know, it's set by the legislature. We don't have any choice. Um, but I, I'm glad you brought it up and I'm glad it's your birthday, because usually we don't have, like, we've got a workshop that day, onsite workshop clinic or something. We usually don't do anything before the swearing-in, so that the ladies can get their makeup on and get their hair done and all that kind of stuff. I mean, we've always been very respectful to the people, so the men can get their ties tied just right and so forth. So, um, you know, and when I saw that, I don't know what that is for, but.
On-site clinic.
Well, and I, I hate that, believe me, but, I mean, I, believe me, I hate that, but.
All right.
But.
We can bring that a different time.
Yeah, there, I see, I see where the oath of office is supposed to be on the.
So, yeah, and I, I think this is, I think you've made it clear, but just to make sure, we, we would rather not have anything.
Before the oath.
Before the swearing-in.
Out of respect for the new board members.
All right.
Okay. Having nothing more further to come before this board, this meeting is adjourned. We will now meet back at five forty-five with our entertainment for school board meeting tonight.